I'm going to start the meeting in another minute or so. I'd like to make a statement and instructions as far as this meeting goes. Until further notice, it is the county's policy that individuals must wear a facial covering and maintain a social distance from other individuals while indoors on county property. If any members of the public are unable to wear a mask and require special accommodation to speak at today's meeting, the counties provided accommodations to comment via the video center, whose entrance is located off of the government center courtyard underneath the parking garage. County staff will be happy to direct you to that location. This is also a reminder that proper decorum shall be maintained while in the commission chamber. Our law enforcement is here and they are authorized to issue trespass warnings and remove any individuals not in compliance with this policy. Thank you. And on that note, we are going to begin our meeting. This is the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, meeting of January 4th, 2022. Welcome to the new year. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss, who's going to do the invocation today? Commissioner McKinley, please.
Yep, thank you. I'll keep it short this morning. Before we begin our business at hand, let us ask the divine for guidance as we make decisions to help improve our communities. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with every chain of justice.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Mr. Von Lahren, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
I can handle that if you want to recommend me. Mayor?
Oh, hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And happy new year. I'm page twenty-five, four C, happy new year and will be rescheduled for the February 1st, 2020. That concludes the additions, substitutions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? I have Commissioner Kerner and Vice Mayor Weiss, all in favor, all opposed. We have a seven-zero for the adoption of the agenda. We now move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any comment cards, Commissioner?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? I see nobody rushing to their buttons. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor, seconded by the Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed. That is approved, seven to zero. Okay, we have a pretty light agenda today, so we should be out of here before noon. I'm going to move on now to special presentations, and we have three.
We have two.
Two, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, four C is out. Okay, very good. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
At this time, I would like to, as we weren't able to do this in person last year, but every year I've done this in person, I've asked Commissioner Kerner to come join me at the podium, and the reason for that is he was instrumental during his time in the legislature in passing anti-human trafficking legislation. So Commissioner Kerner? There he is. I'd also like to invite Ellen Bogdanoff, Senator Bogdanoff is the Chair of the Florida Alliance to End Human Trafficking, if you can join us at the podium, and Susan Knopf, the Vice President of the Human Trafficking Coalition of Palm Beach County. Thank you so much for being here today. January 11th is Human Trafficking Awareness Day, and so if everybody could remember to wear blue on that day, we would appreciate it. But today, we're here to declare January 2022 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery impacting nearly 25 million people worldwide, and occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery. Whereas human trafficking is the fastest-growing criminal enterprise in the world today, and is tied with arms smuggling as the second-largest international criminal industry. Human traffickers view Florida as one of the most attractive destinations and transit points for their victims, and accounts for the third-largest call volume to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Palm Beach County was the first of Florida's 67 counties to implement an ordinance requiring the posting of informational signs at certain types of facilities to inform potential trafficking victims of the remedies and protections provided by federal and state law, and that is a law that Commissioner Kerner passed in the legislature. Whereas reports from the Florida Department of Children and Families indicates that among the calls to the Child Abuse Hotline in Palm Beach County in 2021, there were 64 reports of the trafficking of minors, 50 of which were reports of commercial sexual exploitation of children, and 14 were reports of labor trafficking of children. Whereas Palm Beach County is committed to sending a strong message to perpetrators that our county has zero tolerance for all forms of trafficking. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled today that January 2022 in our county is Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And I would also like to thank Senator Lori Berman and Representative Kelly Skidmore for the legislation that they have filed this year to increase the crime category for certain trafficking violations. At this time, Commissioner Kerner, and then we'll recognize Susan and Senator Bogdanoff.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. I appreciate the recognition, particularly recognition of the ongoing crime of human trafficking, both here in Palm Beach County throughout the United States and world. It's the type of crime that is not very often seen, but it is one of those crimes that the general public can be very effective in combating, and so we remind you and everyone in the community that it could be somebody right next to you in the grocery store, and it could be somebody at a hair salon, or in a Turnpike Plaza rest center. We never know who's looking for help and who's been forced into forced labor and human trafficking, and that is the purpose of these signs, that is the purpose of the Human Trafficking Hotline, and that is the purpose of our diligence. So please err on the side of caution and always be on the lookout for somebody that might be being victimized. We appreciate your service and your leadership as well, Senator.
Susan.
As Vice President of the Human Trafficking Coalition of the Palm Beaches, it gives me great pleasure to accept this proclamation. I would like to recognize the Palm Beach County Human Trafficking Task Force, the lead law enforcement agency in Palm Beach County, along with victim services and Catholic charities, for their efforts to combat human trafficking and to provide direct services. The coalition, which started in 2005 and became a nonprofit in 2021, provides education and outreach in Palm Beach County in order to prevent human trafficking and to increase the identification of victims in the community. The coalition supports the task force by providing specialized presentations to youth, school, school staff, parents, medical professionals, social service providers, community members, and hospitality staff. In 2021, we educated over 5,500 people on human trafficking and online safety, and created a survivor's support fund. Please support our upcoming virtual 5K race for freedom hosted by the coalition and the Palm Beach County Human Trafficking Task Force. For more information or to schedule a presentation, httpb.org, and thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, Mayor, other Commissioners. I'm Ellen Bogdanoff. I'm here on my capacity as the Chair of the DSO, which is the Support for the Council on Human Trafficking, which is chaired by our Attorney General, Ashley Moody. I was appointed by the Senate President and subsequently elected Chair. We were created in statute in 2019, then COVID hit, so we didn't have a lot going on, and that was, we are here to raise money to support the efforts of the statewide council, which has done tremendous work. We have an incredible training tool on our website that we encourage everybody to do because human trafficking has been called many things over the years by many different names, and it's nice to settle on something that people can identify with, and our training tool has trained thousands of people, not only in the state of Florida, but other people outside the state of Florida have accessed it. I know that Palm Beach County Days is next week, and it just so happens that we have a press conference with the Attorney General on Wednesday. We invite all of you to please come, all of those from Palm Beach County, to join us on an announcement on how we're going to expand our training tool, and we're very excited about that. But more importantly, we have an annual event called Hope and Healing, and that's our major fundraiser for the year, and we are having it next year in December, or this year, because we're in 2022, right, in December at The Breakers. So last year, we did it in Tampa. We raised over $400,000 for the efforts to fight human trafficking, and we hope to beat that this year. So we will be in touch with all of you because we would love for you all to come and join us, but thank you for this opportunity, and we look forward to seeing you all next week.
And before we take the photo, I'd also like to give a shout out to two people. First is Verdinia Baker, our County Administrator, who assured that all county employees, all new hires, have to go through human trafficking awareness training, and current employees also had to do that. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Ramsey Bolclay. In his capacity, he's developed a unique program through Code Enforcement that has trained all of the Code Enforcement officers on how to recognize the signs of trafficking, and it's led to some successful prosecutions. So thank you, Ramsey.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and obviously, human trafficking is something that's not in someone else's backyard, but it's in our backyard. Commissioner Bernard, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would Ike Powell, Dorit Miller, and other members of Youth Services please come forward?
Thank you.
As we know, mentoring can really change the trajectory of someone's life, and many of us who are here as Commissioners or as leaders in Palm Beach County are here because of great mentors in our community. And so that's the reason why today we're declaring January 2022 as Mentoring Month. Whereas January 2022 will mark the 20th anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for young people. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to fill gaps for young people and families, connecting them with resources and ensuring that mentoring relationships continue either in person or virtually. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors with the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people, and drives positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of a young person and their relationships with other adults. And whereas students who meet regularly with mentors, with their mentors, are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs, and 27% less likely to start drinking. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring, and recruit caring adult mentors throughout Palm Beach County. And whereas the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners support the organized mentoring initiatives and encourages participation in mentoring programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session in this fourth day of January 2022, that January 2022 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Mentoring Month. Congratulations.
Good morning, and thank you so much, Commissioner Bernard, for your support. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mayor Weinroth. Good morning, Vice Mayor Weiss, all Commissioners and Administrator Baker. I'm Ike Powell with the Youth Services Department. Thank you so much for your continued support, especially this proclamation for Mentoring Month. We thank you to the entire Board of County Commissioners and county administration for your support and all that you do. We are so appreciative for this proclamation declaring January as Mentoring Month here in Palm Beach County. It aligns with nationwide efforts in highlighting the importance of mentoring during National Mentoring Month. The county's Youth Services Department and the My Brothers Keeper Network of Palm Beach County collaborates with United Way of Palm Beach County and a host of agencies throughout the county to build capacity, provide technical assistance, mentor recruitment, and matching youth with mentors and other developmental opportunities. Mentoring connects youth with caring adults that listen and develop a relationship having very powerful impact on the success of young people in a variety of personal, academic, and professional situations. Many youth have experienced some form of trauma, and being connected with a caring adult that provides emotional support, the youth is able to become resilient, thrive, and achieve great life outcomes. Often, individuals ask, what does it take to be a mentor? My experience has been that it takes commitment, being consistent, communication skills, including keen listening skills, encouraging and inspiring others. There's always available opportunities to be a mentor. It's extremely rewarding personally. Thus, I always encourage everyone to serve as a mentor to a youth, if not already doing On January 19th at noon, the United Way Palm Beach County, one of our primary partners in the mentoring movement, will be hosting an online mentoring recruitment, and we ask everyone to attend. There's a whole host of opportunities to mentor, whether they be school-based, group, mentoring, one-on-one, community-based, and the United Way serves as the mentoring hub here in Palm Beach County. I'm so proud to have them with us here today as our key partner in the mentoring movement. And finally, in closing, I'd like to recognize our Assistant County Administrator, Dorit Miller, who stands with us here today. Also, we have Tammy Fields, the Youth Services Department Director, who's here with us virtually, and we have my director, the Outreach and Community Programming Division Director, Gita Los Jacobson's here, and representatives from our partner, the United Way of Palm Beach County, and also other mentoring organizations that are joining us virtually. Again, thank you, everyone, for your continued support.
Thank you very much, and certainly Mentoring Month is important, and it's good that we don't lose sight of our need to mentor our youth, especially during this period when person-to-person relationships are a little bit more difficult because of the pandemic. We have no public hearings today, so I assume we had no proof of publication, so we will move on to the regular agenda. First item is 6A1, which is something near and dear to the heart to Commissioner Moreno.
So I'd like to make a motion to name the East Recreation Room at the West Jupiter Recreation Center to the Edna W. Runner Youth Activities Room.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? Show that approved unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you, Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you all.
We're going to move on to item 6A2. This is a date extension. It's an amendment to the developer and operator agreement with the West Palm Beach Housing Authority for the Cottage Homes Project to extend the date by which the WPBHA is to complete the design and permitting. Do we have anybody who needs a presentation? Do I have a motion to approve?
No motion.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by the Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed? Show that as being approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much. We now move on to item 6B1. This is a motion that staff recommends we approve, a reestimate of the infrastructure surtax project plan, and a budget transfer of $51,904,273,000 in local government one-set infrastructure surtax capital project fund to fund various capital projects. Does anybody need a presentation? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. All in favor, all opposed? That's approved, seven to zero. Told you it was going to be a quick meeting. Six, I know, don't put the horse before the carriage, or the carriage before the horse. 6C1. This is our famous map of new districts, which I am told by Mr. Rutter has now been approved. Do you want to just give us a Reader's Digest condensed version of where we are and what we're doing here today?
I could do the condensed Reader's Digest version even. Yes, the ordinance that you, the board adopted has been received by the state. Your new commission districts are in effect. Sent you an email last night, just letting you know about GeoNav, having the accurate districts, and we've got some requests from some of your offices already. We're prepared to work with all of your offices on any requests you have for new maps, boards, hard copies, information, data, whatever the case may be. I'd be happy to coordinate those as we move forward, but you have new commission districts in place.
Very good. I see no lights. I'm going to look for a motion to receive and file. I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor Weiss has seconded. All in favor, all opposed? Show that has been approved unanimously. We are up to D1, and this is an exciting item, which we can have a couple of moments just to crow about. This has been, I guess, a long time coming and trying to get this lease agreement approved. Dorit, you can give us a little bit of background on this.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning to everyone. Vice Mayor Weiss, Board of County Commissioners, and also Administrator Baker. Well, as the mayor pointed out, is that this is an exciting moment for Palm Beach County, and I would just like to start with some thank yous, okay? We would not be here had it not been for our Administrator Baker, who said, "Go for it." And she said, "Go for it," and that was quickly followed up with a site visit with Parks and Recreation Team to Peanut Island. So we were able to inspect the historic structure and the Kennedy bunker, and that was all of administration. Everybody in administration actually went, so at least you could see it firsthand. And that was just the start of the excitement in trying to get this last piece of Peanut Island developed. So thanks again to the Port Commission. We had two public meetings, and we received unanimous approval from the port. Also want to thank the Executive Director, Manny Almira, and the attorney, John Fumira. He was the newly-appointed counsel for the port. That was actually on the top of his list, and he got it down in a very expeditious manner. Want to thank our partners, and our partners are Palm Beach Shores. Mayor Fires, he attended all the meetings and lent his support. City of Riviera Beach, which is city manager Jonathan Evans, he was always there and very, very supportive. The Town of Palm Beach, Deputy Town Manager Jay Booth Heschwar. And a big shout out to the former mayor of Palm Beach, Gail Coniglile. She was very instrumental in getting this project where we are today, get it done, and she, you know, attended all the meetings and voiced her support. We also had some Palm Beach County residents who were very supportive of this project, attended the meetings and also lent their voices. And not to mention our team PBC. This is a true example of cross-department working across the aisle to deliver a project. Eric, Eric Cole, right here with Jennifer Cirillo and the Parks and Recreation Team. And I see Eric, and I call him, you know, the resident historian of Palm Beach County for all things parks and recreation. He has been working on this project for decades, and I am so happy that, you know, we were able to deliver this project before Eric retires, okay? That was one of his goal. FDO, Isame and Purvey and their team. Planning Department, Patricia Bain. She has attended several meetings, done a lot of work in terms of what we can do and what we cannot do, and tried to craft the lease agreement. And our county attorney. So Todd, you have Patrick, everybody in administration, John, Nancy, you know, we're all excited. We worked on this project. And so this is just an amazing demonstration of collaboration and teamwork, and so we are very, very pleased to get this done and to present to you today. So with that said, I will please allow Eric Cole, the Director of Parks and Recreation, our historian, to present the business deal.
Thank you, Dorit. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrators, thank you for the opportunity. I'm thinking that when she talks about historian, she's calling me old, but I'm not sure. But I will be retiring this year, so it's nice to be able to bring this across the finish line, hopefully today. The county has leased 36 acres from the port as public park since 1994 on Peanut Island. The initial term of the lease was for 30 years, and it will expire in 2024. The port owns an additional six-plus acres containing the historic structures that include the former Coast Guard Station and Boathouse, which dates back to 1936, and the boat docks and the JFK Kennedy bunker built in '61. The site was formerly leased to the Palm Beach Maritime Museum until their lease terminated in 2017. At that time, the port initiated discussions with Parks and Recreation for possible long-term lease of the additional six-acre site and former Coast Guard structures and Kennedy bunker. In March of 2019, the county entered into separate interlocal agreement with the port to provide general oversight of the historic area and provide landscape maintenance, similar to what we provided in the rest of the park and the grounds. County staff paused our negotiations with the port for more than a year when the port began to seek alternative leasing options with other partners. We confirmed our continued interest in the property, and earlier this year, the port returned with a desire to renew negotiations with us. In early 2021, county staff, including those from Parks and Property and Real Estate Management and the county attorney's office, reached agreement with the port on the terms of a new lease with an initial term of 30 years and an automatic renewal for an additional 25 years. After a long and trying period of negotiating the lease agreement with staff, the Port Commission approved the lease unanimously at their December 16th commission meeting. Staff is excited about the educational and programmatic possibilities that are achievable by adding this historic area to the county parks inventory. We now seek board approval of this lease and a budget transfer of $100,000 from Zone One impact fees to establish the Peanut Island Coast Guard redevelopment project. And I'll answer any questions if you have them, but we are excited to hopefully bring this thing home.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, and certainly we are as excited as you are to see this brought home before your retirement. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion to approve the lease agreement and the budget transfer. Yes, look at that, there's a light on. Commissioner Moreno, would you like to be recognized?
I would like to be recognized. Actually, this was probably one of my first outside meetings as a county commissioner over a year ago, when the port was actually thinking of going leasing to Riviera Beach. So I am so excited that the whole team came together and that there was a meeting of the minds with all of the other cities and other interested parties to make this happen. I know that Eric and Verdinia were in my office a year ago, over a year ago. I know that Eric and Verdini were in my office a year ago, over a year ago, saying, "Maria, how do you feel about this?" And I said, "This is something that we need to have in our Parks and Recreation Department." So I appreciate all the efforts that went through. And with that, I would like to motion to, a motion to approve a lease agreement between the Port of Palm Beach District Port and Palm Beach County for approximately forty-two acres of land on Peanut Island, and a separate motion for a budget transfer of one hundred thousand from Zone One Park Impact V reserves to the Peanut Island Coast Guard redevelopment project.
With your permission, we'll do it as a consolidated motion. That'll be D one, A and B, the approval, which has been moved by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. Congratulations, everybody, we have ourselves an island. That ends the regular agenda, but we move on to more important things to deal with, and that's board appointments. We have item seven A one. We have before us a recommendation to approve the reappointment of, or new appointment of one member of the Land Development Regulation Advisory Board, otherwise known as ALDREB, for a term of February ninth, twenty twenty-two, to February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner Kerner, you are recognized.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make nomination of Drew Martin for seat twelve on behalf of the Sierra Club and Loxahatchee group.
I have a, I have a motion to approve Drew Martin. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. I will now entertain this, another motion by Commissioner Moreno.
I would actually, given the board's desire to increase diversity on our boards and councils, I believe keeping Suzanne Kennedy, who's already appointed and has been an asset to the committee, I believe she should be reappointed. I'd hate to see the makeup of this board go from fourteen men and four women to fifteen men and three women. Thank you.
Okay, so your motion is to reappoint Susan Kennedy?
My motion would be to reappoint Susan Kennedy.
Okay, so that's from Maria Moreno and seconded by?
I don't think nominations require a second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote. We're gonna go from, you may comment, Vice Mayor. Don't let me ever ignore you again.
Trust me, I'll kick you under the, that is, so. I just, my understanding is there is an opportunity currently that to put an alternate on this, in this position, and so I think maybe a resolution to this is to leave Ms. Kennedy and then appoint Drew Martin as the alternate. And is that, is that what we can do?
So what we can do, bring back the alternate position at our next available meeting, but yes, we did have a recent vacancy of our position number seventeen, which is an alternate. So we do have an ability to bring the next person, whoever you don't nominate, back before the board as the alternate position in seat seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have two nominees. I'm going to ask for a roll call in reverse district order, just to mix it up for you a little bit. So District Seven will come first.
I support Susan Kennedy.
Okay, we have a vote for Kennedy. District Six.
For all the reasons Commissioner Moreno made the nomination, I vote for Susan Kennedy.
Okay, District Five will?
I don't know Ms. Kennedy. I do know that Mr. Martin has been here at every meeting, has been very vocal, and has always been an advocate for environmental issues, so I will cast my vote for Mr. Martin.
District Five votes for Mr. Martin. District Three.
Mr. Martin.
District Two.
Ms. Kennedy.
District One.
Susan Kennedy.
And District Four will vote for Mr. Martin, and I show that Ms. Kennedy has been reappointed by a vote of four to three. And we will ask that you bring back at our next meeting the appointment potentially of Mr. Martin as an alternate to the ALDREB. Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Comment or question?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the email that was provided, it said we can make the second motion to appoint the non-selected person as alternate in seat seven. Is that possible to do today?
Actually, it's not, and the, and the timing of it, the way it worked out, that seat became vacant, it was, and we apologize, that was not entirely accurate. Let us prepare an agenda item, we'll bring it through the same way. We certainly have one nominee, we'll seek any other nominations, and bring it back to the board.
All right, so Drew will be listed as a nominee for the alternate when it comes back to us?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, that takes care of item seven A one. We're going to move on to seven B one now, which is another appointment. This one is for the Office of Equal Opportunity. Staff recommends a motion to approve the appointment of one youth representative at fifteen, eighteen years of age to serve as the ex officio youth member of the Advisory Commission on Women, commencing January fourth, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Vice Mayor Weiss, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Kate Deviney as our youth representative on the Women Advisory Board on Women. She was, I, you know, just want to add that Ms. Deviney served as an intern in my office this past summer, and I know she would represent the youth very well on this, on this board.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to nominate Daphne Miranda Zapata.
Okay, Commissioner, you have, okay, Daphne Miranda Zapata, did I get that right? All right, any other nominations? Seeing none, the nominations are closed, and we'll have a roll call this time in order with District One going first.
Thank you. I will go with Kate Deviney, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Was that Daphne?
Kate Deviney.
Okay. Kate? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble here this morning.
Kate. Kate.
Thank you. Between the mask, my old ears, and these plexiglass walls, it's tough. Okay, District Two, please.
Kate Deviney.
District Three, please.
Daphne Miranda Zapata.
Thank you. District Five, please.
Daphne Miranda Zapata.
Thank you. District Six, please.
Daphne Miranda Zapata.
District Seven, please.
Daphne Miranda Zapata.
And the mayor will vote for Kate Deviney, but the count is four to three, and Ms. Miranda Zapata is the new appointment to the Commission on Women, and we congratulate her. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay, we're gonna move on to board appointments. Commissioner Sacks, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And on behalf of District Five, the people of District Five, I'd like to reappoint Dr. Lori Viniker to the Land Development Regulation Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed, show that is approved seven to zero. Any others? Commissioner Sacks, you're done?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard.
No appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner?
No appointments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
None.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno?
None at this time.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, and the mayor has none. Okay, we are going to move on to the meat and potatoes of the meeting, and I guess that's why the fourth estate is here. We're going to move on to administrators' comments. Hello, Ms. Baker, how are you?
Okay, how are you?
We miss you, but we, we see your presence over our shoulder, and we know that you're a guiding light, so what's on your, your comments today?
Okay, first I'm going to start with eight A one, and that's to ask the board to receive and file our updated board directives. I will give you a more detailed board directive next month.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed, then motion to receive and file is approved seven to zero.
The other item that I have under my comment, I'm, Mayor, you and I have spoken on quite a few occasions regarding the purchase of at-home test kits, and I'm bringing this to the board as you requested. I'd like to give just a quick summary of what we're doing here in Palm Beach County as far as testing is concerned. And it is crucial to all of us that we get tested, but more importantly, that we get vaccinated and boosted. In light of the recent demand for COVID-related testing in Palm Beach County, I want to share with you that Palm Beach County, working with our partners, Department of Health, the state, as well as the Healthcare District, that we have maintained a significant number of testing locations since first openings of public and private testing sites in the county in twenty twenty. When this started to wane and we were in a good position, it wasn't so much of a community spread, we still kept our testing sites open when other counties closed theirs. So we kept ours open with our state partners. In addition to that, you know, during twenty twenty, we had very large testing site and maintained those throughout the county. During the most recent surge over the past two weeks, three additional public testing sites have been added to our testing site inventory. Most recently this week is close to part in Boynton Beach, open for testing. Last week, in partnership with the city of Riviera Beach, a testing site was opened outside of the Wells Community Center. And the week prior, in partnership with the Healthcare District, a mobile site was open for testing at the Lakeside Hospital in Belle Lake. To date, nine public sites are open for testing in Palm Beach County, in addition to these three new, our FAU Tech Runway, South County Civic Center, Mid-County Civic Senior Center, Gaines Park in West Palm Beach, Palm Beach Gardens Library, and the Department of Health in Belle Lake. We also have many other options through our private businesses, pharmacies, grocery stores, medical clinics, and doctors' offices. Over a hundred and sixty of those locations are here, and people can make appointments. Those listings are on our website, www.pbcgov.com, and that number continues to grow. We want to encourage people to just not go to the private site, I mean, public sites, but to also utilize the private sites. Just a tidbit, I also ordered off Amazon.com. So that is also, not a plug for Amazon, but you can definitely find them there. In addition to that, we have been working, and I, I have my partner, Dr. Alonso, from the Health Department, because I have been harassing her regarding getting us in line for the state issuance of the at-home test as well. Miami-Dade and Briar Counties received theirs last week in open sites to dispense. It is my understanding, we do not have them in hand as of yet, but we are on for a total of roughly about forty-five thousand test kits that will come from the state. We don't have them in hand. We do anticipate receiving roughly about twenty-four thousand today. We are per di, we are getting prepared to have regional distribution sites throughout the county to hand out the test kits. It is not our intent to mail at-home test kits. So that is where we are today, and I am open to any direction that the board wants to give me as far as purchasing additional test kits. We are aware that the federal government will be opening a portal, so people can contact the, the federal government, and they will ship them to your house. In addition to the ones that we will distribute at our regional distribution sites, whether we get them from the state, I requested two hundred and fifty thousand from the state. This, hopefully, the forty-five that I am hearing they're committed to so far is just the beginning of that two hundred and fifty thousand. We do anticipate, and staff has been working with the State Department of Emergency Management and the Governor's Office, Todd has led that particular effort, and we anticipate another monoclonal antibody treatment site being located here in Palm Beach County. But again, we are getting on the stand to finalize that. Our only site today is the West Gate Community Center.
Thank you. All right, so again, just to reiterate, we are going to be receiving some at-home test kits. We are still testing vigorously at the nine public sites. The one issue that you didn't address, of course, is that the testing at home is not going to give us the kind of recorded results that we get if people go to the public sites, and that's going to be a weakness of that. People also may or may not get the most accurate of results as compared to the drive-up results. It's my understanding, County Administrator, that you have authority at this point without board action to acquire up to two hundred thousand dollars worth of testing kits at this point in time, is that correct?
We, we do have that authority. If we declare this an emergency and we can justify this as an emergency, these are federal dollars that we will be utilizing, and so there are extra rules that we must follow in order for them not to come back audit and clawback dollars. So I have our deputy purchasing director, Samara Cooper, who has been looking into this. We have received a number of unsolicited bids for providing these type of services, so we've got a list of companies that can provide if it is our desire to, to purchase. So we can purchase up to a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars worth, and then we can come to the board if we want to purchase even more. So we would need to look at, number one, justification for it, which I, we have, I've spoken with the deputy director for purchasing, she agrees that it meets the emergency criteria. Two, we need to make sure we're following federal guidelines or our emergency procurement process, and we've got awareness that we would need to count that and make sure that we're following those guidelines. Anything over the two, over the hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, we'll bring an eye to the board if it's necessary.
All right, just for a point of clarification, I don't know if Ms. Kaufman wants to address this, if Mr. Bonlaren or our county administrator. What would the board action need to be today to give you maximum flexibility so that you could go and, and acquire more than two hundred thousand dollars worth of test kits if you deemed it appropriate? I'll open it for the, Ms. Kaufman, you want to pipe in on this one?
I, I think the board would need to find that as far as the availability, availability of testing, there is an emergency, and that the board would authorize the county administrator to purchase, you know, up to five hundred thousand dollars worth of testing. She will still have to follow the federal procurement guidelines even under an emergency. It's a slightly shortened process, but she has to get quotes, she has to go through guidelines to make sure that minority businesses have ample opportunity to participate. You have to have really clearly documented reasons for saying that this is an emergency, and I think that's why we would look to the board to put forth some reasons why that there is an emergency situation here. I don't think we have to declare a state of emergency, but it has to be an emergency regarding testing and the current situation that would justify us short-cutting some of the normal procedures. So we're not going to do an RFP, but we still will have to go out and solicit bids and see who's actually available to participate in this, who has the inventory, and who can give us the very best price, as well as documenting the rest of the federal requirements, just like FEMA.
Thank you. And certainly, I think the situation on our test centers right now could be deemed an emergency. Mr. Bonlaren, would you give us an update on the situation at the test sites at this point in time as far as their capacity and their ability to handle the influx of residents attempting to get tested?
Mayor and Commissioners, certainly, I can really sum that up in one word, and it's busy. Our, our testing locations are extremely busy countywide. We have been working with municipalities where they're located within those municipalities. We've had pretty long lines at most of our sites. I can share with you in terms of numbers, sites like the FAU Tech Runway, for example, saw a record number of tests last week of about three thousand a day. South County Civic Center, about two thousand a day. In the north end of the county, in the gardens, we're looking In the north end of the county, in the gardens, we're looking at about 1,500 to 1,600 a day. Those were roughly seeing about three or four weeks ago, you know, a couple of hundred potentially a day. So, clearly, it's very visible, I mean, that there is traffic out there right now. We're moving a lot of people through those sites, but people are coming back each day. Now, granted, we've had some downtime because of the holidays, and we've had some time off over the Christmas holiday, as well as the New Year's holiday, where we had sites shut down for a couple of days. So, some of that volume on the tail end might have been accelerated because of that. And then, of course, you know, yesterday, we also had some busy sites. But we're managing them with our contractor, and they're doing a great job in moving quite a few people through those locations.
Before I open this up to my colleagues, Mr. Bonlaren, could you let me know or let us know, what's the average wait time in these sites right now?
It varies from location to location, but, you know, we've seen reports of people waiting for, you know, multiple hours in some locations. So, at least an hour, if not longer, sometimes upwards of two and a half to three hours in some locations. So, that's pretty significant, but we've got a lot of people out there that are looking to get testing.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioner McKinley, you're up.
Hey, Todd, don't go away. Or Todd or Ms. Baker, whomever wants to answer the question. Let me start with our first responders. So, our sheriff's department, is he handling testing of his employees on his own, or would he look to us to provide those at-home kits to his officers and correction officers?
Commissioner McKinley, currently, the sheriff has not requested anything from us on the testing. I think he's handling that in-house himself. And of course, we would provide any assistance if requested for our employees, for his employees as well.
Okay, and then, how about our firefighters? Are they, the testing handled through their clinics? Or do they have access to?
Yes, ma'am.
They are? Okay. So, in terms of prior-
I do want to make one exception. I did find out they're closed on Sunday, but the other six days of the week, yes, they are doing their testing for the firefighters.
Okay, so, in terms of prioritizing, who would receive these kits? Are you talking about having some sort of priority list, or are you talking about just opening up distribution sites similar to the water distribution sites we have after a hurricane? I'm just afraid of mass chaos on some of our local roadways if we do that.
Well, I, when it comes to our employees that, you know, they've got COVID and it's affecting our workload, I'm going to address county employees separate and apart from that. So, we've got a process that we're looking at. For the general public, and that is how we, what we're talking about right now, this at-home kit, I think the only way to do it fairly and equitably is to set up the regional and first come, first served. That is how my counterparts throughout, especially South Florida, is currently doing it.
Okay. And what is our most recent positivity rate in the county?
We're 31%.
All right. So, what you're looking for, Mayor, is some sort of motion that authorizes an emergency purchase?
I think that in line with our county attorney, if we had a declaration of an emergency situation, and then gave authorization to our county administrator to purchase up to $500,000 of home testing supplies, and allow her to go through the process as been detailed by our county attorney, that would be an appropriate motion.
Okay, but I think what I heard from our county attorney, unless I misheard her, was that a declaration of emergency wasn't necessary.
That is, that's correct. The emergency exists only in regard to testing.
So, she's looking for the moat-
Mayor, may I clarify? In our procurement process, we have a clause that allows us to find and declare an emergency, but it must be justified. And that is the clause that we are going to use. So, no, it is not necessary for you to declare a state of emergency at this point, but it is necessary to declare an emergency and needs to meet the criteria, which I believe in this instance, we can come up with a justification for meeting that criteria.
Okay, so, Ms. Kaufman, help me through this. I'd like to make a motion that an emergency situation exists in regards to testing in Palm Beach County and authorize the County Administrator and her staff to purchase at-home testing kits in an amount up to $500,000.
Yes.
Not to exceed $500,000.
I'm going to accept that motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks.
Yes.
Okay.
Before I second, and I think it's an excellent idea and a motion, however, I want to make sure that it will be up to $500,000 that our County Administrator can purchase, but that these, what concerns me is first come, first served. And I think we need to possibly make this as part of the motion so that these kits are not, that we find a way, and I'm opening this up for discussion, we find a way to distribute these kits so that it is not at a first come, first served basis. And the reason I'm saying is that there are many people who really need these kits, who may be homebound, or seniors, or unable to drive to this location to pick up a kit. I recall that these masks were mailed to every citizen, every resident of Palm Beach County. And I'd like to entertain the idea of possibly mailing kits to our residents.
Commissioner Sacks, I'm going to ask you to defer the discussion on that particular issue until we handle whether this board is going to give the County Administrator the authority under the emergency situation to exceed the $200,000 cap, using the $500,000 cap that we would establish if this motion's approved, and then we can have further discussions as far as the policy that she would utilize for distribution.
Excellent. That's a good idea, as long as that we, up to the 500, and I'm looking at Denise, Ms. Kaufman, up to the $500,000 limit that we can purchase, purchase these test kits for the use of Palm Beach County residents, but that we will defer the process of distribution until after it's approved. Absolutely. Now, second, Ms. McKinley's motion.
Okay, so Commissioner McKinley has made the motion. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner McKinley, did you want to clarify, or you just find? Okay. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
So, $500,000 worth of at-home kits is going to get us roughly 20,000 kits, you know, basically $25 a kit. But the timeframe at which we find them, purchase them, bring them here, distribute them, are we past the two weeks of when we think this craze is going to be over? I don't, I don't have a crystal ball. The holidays are over, people are going to work. At-home kits, are they, if you take an at-home test, is that going to clear you for some of the requirements that people need the test for? So, while I think it's a great idea, I'm not so sure that by the time we get them, they're going to be effective. I know if you're traveling, we approved a facility at the airport for testing for COVID when you're traveling. It is by appointment only. I know that Ms. Beebe has kept us informed about that, but that's just a reminder that you can get that test at the airport when you're traveling. Please make an appointment. But I, I'm not sure that we can even get this, get these here in time to distribute them. And it's only $20,000, it's only 20,000 tests. And how do you know if you're doing the test right? And you really need to do the test twice if you're doing an at-home test. The kits have two tests, but people are not doing them as I'm taking the test and then I'm going to follow up with the second test. So, there's a lot of caveats involved in an at-home test, and I'm not sure that the timing will fit what we need at this point in time.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. And I will interject, as I said before, the biggest problem with home testing is we don't get those results to the state, and therefore, we don't know, the County Administrator alluded to a positivity rate running over 30% right now. That certainly would not be affected by these home test kits. There's also, I understand the state will be making kits available according to our County Administrator, and I think the process with the state kits is that you have to register to use those kits, and so, there is some process of accounting for those results. County Administrator, can you give us some of what you understand, how those test kits are working?
It is my understanding, and again, I don't hold me factually to this, because we have not received them, I have not read a document on them. However, it is my understanding, the ones that have been distributed have not, they must be registered, and at this point, a lot of them have not been registered, so they're either not being used, or they're being used and not registered. So, they're not in the database for the state.
Okay, very good. And of course, we've heard the announcement from the federal government that there's potentially going to be test kits distributed from the federal government, but again, we don't know the timing on that. So, let's move on to the Vice Mayor, and let's have some more discussion on the motion that's on the table.
Thank you. I have a question. Is there a shelf life for these test kits?
County Administrator, do you have any answer on that?
I can only tell you that talking with Dr. Alonso, that there are test kits that have a shelf life. What that is, I cannot tell you, or more than likely depend on who we've purchased the test kits from. So, those are things that we would definitely need to be looking at.
So, I'm supportive of trying to help people get tested in general. I share the concerns of my colleague, Commissioner Moreno, as to the timing of how affected that, and hence, the question on the shelf life, because obviously, COVID's not going away, and so, there may, if we can't get them out as quickly as we had thought, maybe have them on hand for future distribution. But if there's a shelf life issue, then that would negate the ability to do something like that. So, I would, you know, but what we're talking about is 20,000 test kits, you know, at $25 a kit, maybe you can do better, but even if you could double it, you could get, you know, 40,000 kits. It may, you know, relieve some of the pressure at these sites where people are just trying to figure out, you know, whether they, if they've been exposed, you know, and they can find out at home. So, but I would think, you know, you'd want to, if there is a shelf life, then you're going to want to order in quantities that you would be able to distribute relatively quickly.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, you know, I think we can all assume that after Omicron will come Pi and every other letter of the Greek alphabet, so that, you know, we're going to have this for a while. I don't think COVID is going to be leaving anytime soon. Commissioner Kernar, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Juan Roth. I appreciate your leadership in bringing this to the board. I think as a general concept, we need to understand that it's time to start utilizing the other technological advancements that have happened as a result of COVID. One of those is at-home testing. Whether the efficacy of that is the same as a PCR, I don't know. What the shelf life is, I don't know what the acquisition cost is, I don't know. But what I do know is that there's a larger strategy that the federal government has embraced in purchasing hundreds of millions of at-home test kits for our citizens and constituents. There are other states and other counties in this state that have already acted on this, and we are one of the most urban metro areas in the state, and we have a really serious situation on our hands, not just from a traffic standpoint. If you've seen PGA Boulevard, that's not my district, but the amount of calls and anger that has been expressed, not just because of not being able to test at that site, but just being able to travel around that city, has been horrific. The videos have been horrific. This isn't just an after-Christmas, after-New Year's situation. We had, this isn't a craze. We have a 30% positivity rate, and people are very sick. Now, that may have been enhanced because of all the gatherings, but like Mayor Juan Roth said, after Omicron, there's going to be a litany of other situations with COVID where we're going to be left unprepared if we don't have this forethought and action to obtain the resources that we need. You know, 500,000 is fine, it's a drop in the bucket. The state's contribution to this is great. 45,000 tests, that's 3% of our population. That's just for one test. The goal here is a larger code response strategy as we learn to live with it, and that's going to be this new technological advancement that includes at-home testing. No, it's not reported. No, the efficacy isn't as high, but it gives people an option to test themselves at home, not have to go sit on PGA or in Caluso, which is a great resource. But, you know, it's not going, that can't be the end-all of the strategy. The secretary or the surgeon general of the state of Florida yesterday said, "We have to learn how to not test ourselves so much." Maybe that's true, maybe that's not. But one thing that I do know about that concept is that we ought to have the ability, through the use of our government, to be able to test at home, even if it's just a few percentage points more. It gives people options to not have to go out in public. It may give them options to return to work more quickly, and those are things that the private market is going to have to figure out. So, I think what we're embarking on here today isn't a resolution or a solution, it's to start down a path of how we assist our community utilizing this new technology, and to what extent we want to do that. I think 500,000, I don't know how we came up with that number, but that's going to last a couple of days, when you see the demand for people not wanting to sit in traffic for hours and hours and hours and have the ability to test at home. I know that I've purchased several test kits from Amazon, I've used them throughout my travels around the county, and as I traveled throughout the state during Christmas and New Year's, they were very effective and they were very helpful for me, and I was appreciative to have that option. But some people don't have the ability to pay 50 bucks a day to test themselves, or spend three or four hours in line and take off work to do that. So, I commend the mayor for bringing this strategy forward. I think we ought to give the County Administrator some leeway to purchase these, go to emergency management, go to planning staff, get a strategy in order, and then let's start talking about policy and strategy after we've done some acquisition of these very precious resources that are going to be very, very hard to come by in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Kernar. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion by Commissioner McKinley. I believe that it is so important for us to get the test kits to our residents as soon as possible. I know that Mr. Todd Bonlaren said some of the people were waiting an hour or two, but my experience during the whole holidays, where people were waiting four to five hours to get testing. And so, we have a duty to protect our residents, and we don't have the time to wait two to three weeks. I think this is something that needs to be done now, so in that way, we can protect our residents in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Sacks, on the motion?
I second the motion, and I move for a vote.
Commissioner McKinley.
Yeah, thank you. One question, and then I need to clarify the motion. Ms. Baker, would this purchase be done in addition to what you're seeking from the state, or would this be in case we don't get what we're getting from the state?
If the board gives me direction to purchase this, it will hopefully be in conjunction with what we're getting from the state. I'm hoping that the state does not take this message, we don't need their help, and we cut what we have requested of them.
Okay, so I have to imagine the priority right now in terms of the manufacturers of these tests is through the federal government, then to the state government, and then we're going to kind of be on the third on that totem pole. So, let's encourage, if we haven't done so already, that we make sure our legislative delegation and our congressional delegation know that we would like to be a priority, given our 30-plus percent positivity rate. And then, on the advice of counsel, I just want to put into the record on the motion that the, we're declaring this an emergency purchase is defined in our purchasing code that states it would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the county if the regular procurement process is followed. So, just putting that in the motion, so the federal guidelines are met, and that certainly addresses Commissioner Moreno's issue in terms of timing. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm looking to the clerk to make sure that she has that properly documented. That being said, and seeing no more lights on and no public requests for moments to talk to us, I'm going to call the motion to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Show that is unanimously approved, seven to zero. The County Administrator has now been given the authority to purchase up to $500,000 worth of home testing supplies based upon an emergency situation that's been recognized by this board. Commissioner Kernar, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing these issues to the board and to the administrator. The other issue that came up, but we haven't discussed yet, was the status of the operational effectiveness of our unit of government, whether that's fire rescue, or water utilities, or the sheriff's office. There was direction from this board several weeks ago. I believe there was direction with regards to operational evaluations of testing the county government employees. I don't know that we have to sort that out today. I know that Todd and Verdina have been working diligently on that, and I appreciate that. But what I do think is important to recall is that if the general population's positivity rate right now is about 30%, we're going to experience those same effects in our units of government. And so at some point, I think it's important that the administration report back to either the mayor, or the board as a whole, or in our agenda reviews, what the operational plan is going to be and what the effects have been as a result of the Omicron wave. I can tell you that I've seen government continue to run very effectively, but I have heard from law enforcement and fire rescue about some staffing issues there. I haven't heard from our administrator on it, and it may not be an issue, but I want to sort of ring the bell or raise a flag here that, you know, the Board of County Commissioners has a vested interest in knowing and understanding how the administration intends to contend with the operational effectiveness as a result of Omicron. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. County Administrator, do you have any other comments that you wanted to make during your administration comments?
No, I think that is it. I will get with commissioners regarding the impact of COVID, because Delta is still out there as well. And so I have been in constant contact with our fire chief, along with our manager, regarding the number of staff being out, how are we covering it, what methods are we taking? And our fire rescue department is operating under the CDC guidelines for healthcare. So it's just slightly different than the rules that I have put in place for our own county employees. We are looking at those. We are moving forward with ensuring we're doing sanitizing, along with, you know, testing employees. We're looking and will be moving forward, as you stated, Commissioner Kernar, on the testing of our own employees. So we've got the process in place. We are monitoring it, and I will get with the board, with each of you individual, to give you a briefing.
Thank you. Just one question. Obviously, we are a large department, both in our fire rescue and our sheriff's office, that we have some small municipalities where if they are losing two or three of their members to COVID, they're going to be in a situation where they need assistance. Do we have mutual aid agreements with those entities to assist them should they find themselves without the proper staffing?
I think we're all, and I have to tell you that your staff, as I tell you every year during the budget process, we are lean. And so we will assist in any way that we can possibly assist in ensuring that we're still covering our responsibility for Palm Beach County unincorporated. We do have mutual aid. We realize that all the time on a day-to-day basis. That will not change unless we don't have a staff to lead it. But I am sure before we get to that level, we have a fire chief association. I know that they're talking to each other, and we've worked through that process. Law enforcement has the same thing. I, as you well know, the sheriff is a separate constitutional officer. I do work with the sheriff hand-in-hand, but the sheriff makes those types of decisions for us, for the sheriff's department.
Very good, thank you.
We're here to assist in any way that we can.
Commissioner Moreno, you are recognized. I'm sorry?
No other comments.
Okay, very good, thank you. Commissioner Moreno, then Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. I know that we've added two additional sites. Are we researching the opportunity of adding any more than that? And if so, the staffing and the budgeting for that, how does that get taken care of? I guess Todd.
County Administrator.
Todd or Verdina?
Well, right now, we are working with the state vendor. The CDR Maguire is not our vendor per se. We are working with them. We have provided sites for them. Just like anything else, staffing is an issue. So we are stretching it as much as we possibly can, and we're constantly looking. So as we, you know, we can, as long as we can provide sites that work, we can do that. I can tell you that we can continue to add sites as long as people are interested in testing. We have some people that test quite frequently during the week, that they continue. But we'll look, I mean, we're always looking to see if we can cover the county in an equitable manner and get testing done. So we're constantly talking to CDR Maguire on this issue, and right now, they are not in a position to expand any further than what we have already expanded. But if there are others out there, and we do get unsolicited proposals, and they, we find they meet the criteria, we'll work with them.
Mr. Von Lahren, did you want to add anything to that?
The only other thing I would add is that we're also working with CDR in terms of just hours of operation and some of the dates, days that we have in some areas, particularly in the Glades. You know, we reduced some times out there in the Glades region, and so they're certainly open to working with us, and we've been working with Department of Health as well to make sure that we have necessary coverage in the Glades region, so.
Very good. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Commissioner Kernar's point is well-taken, and I'm directing this to our county administrator, to make sure that we have operational efficiency of all our county government services. And I know that Ann Gannon's office has sent out a press release with regard to the waiting time at her, all of her offices because of the shortage in staffing. So I think that letting the public know that we're up for business, we're continuing business, and even though with this high rate, 33% or 30%, that we're still in good operation for all the county services. Secondly, I want to reiterate that even though we did ask, or did give direction to the county administrator to purchase these, I know this is with federal funds, we're a government that has to be overseen by the state and federal governments, but that we need to have a discussion here in the county as to the distribution of whatever kits we get, so that it is fair and equitable for everyone in the county. So I want to thank you for this conversation, Mayor. I think it's been good. I think this is a situation that we find ourselves that we're going to be tested again as a county government, but that we will rise to the occasion as we did initially in March of 2019. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. A follow-up to Commissioner Moreno's comments, I think it was Commissioner Moreno. Who's paying for this? I know that CDR is actually, they're paying to do the testing, but who's paying to set these sites up, put the tent there, do the traffic cones, direct traffic? Certainly, CDR is not paying for all of that.
It's a partnership. CDR is actually having the test kits, et cetera, that's through the state. We work with them in order to identify our location, and we work with the sheriff's office and cities in order to provide law enforcement for traffic control. And we also utilize our own engineering department, traffic, in order to make sure that we work with CDR Maguire in coming up with the appropriate flow.
Okay, when you say the state.
The combination.
So CDR is paid by the state of Florida to run these testing sites?
That's my understanding, yes.
Actually, if, and I could just add a little clarification on that, too. The one thing, the model that CDR has set up at their individual sites is one that involves, and they're incredibly talented, this, it involves drawdown of federal dollars. So for every test that they do, they're able to seek the reimbursement from federal funds that they draw down specifically to do that. They also accept insurance at those locations as well, which is a preferred option for them. So when you go through the line at each of those locations, you are, you know, providing an insurance card, if you have one, and they'll run it through insurance, but they're not asking, or not taking money from anyone there. The bulk of those dollars coming down are coming down from federal dollars and the drawdowns. The involvement with the state as well, in terms of on the monoclonal site that we have and the additional site that we're looking to do, the state is the one who's acquiring some of those tests and works with them on some of those tests, in addition to them trying to acquire those from their own vendors. So a bulk of the dollars is from some of the federal money that flows down, as well as from insurance dollars. We do not pay CDR to come in and set up at our sites, as Administrator Baker indicated. We handle the facilities themselves, and actually, to an extent, CDR takes care of some of the facility components of it. Some of the cleaning, of the restrooms, and those kinds of things are things that CDR is doing, but our facilities team, there are some costs that we absorb from those facilities themselves, and some of the different law enforcement components we've been working on. But just wanted to clarify the flow of the dollars from the federal money and the insurance on those sites.
So the CDR testing locations are funded by drawdowns of federal funds or private insurance?
Primarily, yes.
And the monoclonal site at Westgate is funded by state dollars?
Not necessarily state dollars, because they're probably getting those tests from the federal government as well. So I'm not exactly sure, like, the component of the dollars and how that works, but it's probably some component of acquisition of both federal and state funds for some of the tests, or some of the treatment that happens there.
Okay, and then the monoclonal site that was set up in Belgrade, that was funded through the healthcare district?
The, that's the contract, you're talking specifically with AMR, and if Patrick's here, he can, yeah.
Commissioner, that one, yes. We had a, have a contract, ongoing contract with AMR to provide those services, and they've operated out in the Glades, on and off now for a number of months.
And then, Todd, just one follow-up question. Is the state funding any testing, mass testing locations anywhere in the state of Florida?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And Todd, just one more clarification. We are still putting rangers out there at these sites that are at the parks to help with traffic control and make, keep order as people are waiting for their tests.
Mayor, for example, yesterday, Boynton Beach was a good example. We were working with Boynton Beach Police Department on that site, and it was extremely busy in the morning, so our teams got to work, worked with parks, and parks sent out some additional rangers in there to keep that flow going. So Eric Call and his team have been very helpful in terms of, you know, doing that. Now, most of our testing sites are not in our parks right now. They're in either municipalities or in, you know, more of an urban setting. So law enforcement from PBSO has been working in locations that are county sites and county areas. Municipalities have been working in cases where a site is in a municipality, such as Wells or Gaines Park in West Palm Beach, and Palm Beach Gardens has also been working with us as well at the PGA site.
Okay, and we're doing our best not to have a disruption of businesses in those areas that are trying to continue in operation while these lines are queuing up outside their business locations?
We are doing our best, but I can tell you that certainly there are some disruptions that are occurring in some of those areas. We're very cognizant of it. We're working closely and making sure that people are trying to be, you know, patient in getting some of those worked out, but lines are long. And when you have multiple entries, points of entry on major roadways that feed into businesses and residents, you know, it's, sometimes it's hard to keep up with that throughout, you know, an entire day.
Thank you, Todd. Commissioner Moreno?
Just as a follow-up, a constituent recently purchased an at-home test kit two weeks ago, and the expiration date on it is September 2022. So there is a shelf life on them, and it is less than a year, apparently, for this particular, for this particular one. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Very good. All right. County Administrator has completed her remarks. I don't see any more discussion on this particular topic, so we're going to move on to the county attorney.
Mayor. Mayor, just one thing, I'm sorry. I do want to temper expectations on this. It's like filling the ocean. The demand is always going to be there. We're going to try to fulfill as much as possible, but the solution is not just testing. The solution, part of the solution is getting vaccinated and getting your boosters, washing your distance, washing your hands, and promoting social gatherings. That's the answer for right now.
Thank you for that reminder, and certainly our residents should be cognizant of the fact, this ain't going away. Okay.
Motion received and filed the administrator's report.
That has been, or I think it was already done, so we're good. County Attorney?
No comments.
Okay. We move on now to Commissioner comments, which I guess we'll have a few. Let's go down the line. Commissioner Moreno, you're first.
I think I'll skip them for today.
Okay, we'll let you take a pass. Commissioner Kernar?
Thank you. I just want to make a brief comment of gratitude to our mayor and the board and administrator for tackling these, some of these COVID issues head-on. I know we don't want to jump right back into this conversation, but it's one that needs to be had. And then with regards to the CDR issue, I didn't want to bring it up earlier, but under my comments, if there are other options of local providers to augment the in-person testing versus the at-home testing, I think we ought to look at those. I'm not saying that we need to make any commitments, or we need to, we need to open up our own sites, but if the option is there, then it's something that should be evaluated. I think staff is spending a lot of time right now doing their due diligence and evaluating those options, and that gives us, or puts us a little bit ahead of the game, and I would appreciate that perspective as well. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kernar. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I think that this has been a trying time. We're coming back after a holiday season, and we're faced with this type of emergency again. I'd like to have a thank you to Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Todd Von Lahren, because many times we have constituents call us and there's issues, and it's very good to know that we have someone that we can call, no matter what day or what time it is, and he answers, and he has an answer, he has a solution. So it's up to us as county administrators, all of us, in a way, our county administrators, to make sure that we assist our Verdina Baker and our assistant county administrators to help support our people, because the residents are scared. Some of them are very much in search of solutions, and we will come up with these solutions. And I very much support the idea of getting whatever we can with federal funds, get whatever kits we can buy, procure today, because we need them here in Florida, we need them here in Palm Beach County for our people. So thank you for this conversation, Mayor, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And should '22 be better than '21? Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. I just wanted to throw out there that even though we're not sitting as that board today, this might be a conversation we want to have at our next SWA meeting, is the disposal, the proper disposal of these at-home testing kits. And then just a point that there is one really good way to continue to weaken the variance that we're seeing come out with COVID, and that is to get vaccinated and to get your booster. We're talking a lot about testing today, and yes, we know that a lot of these cases are breakthrough cases, but still, the impact of the virus on a person's health is lessened if they are vaccinated, and particularly if they're boosted. And we're also seeing the flu make its rounds here, so please, 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 get your flu shot, too. flu shot, too. It will certainly help you if you end up getting the flu to shorten the symptoms and the duration of that virus. And then I have two other quick issues. The first one is many of you have been in receipt of an email regarding the Palm Beach County Mounted Posse at the Jim Brandon Center. This is not to be confused with the Sheriff's Mounted Posse Unit. The Palm Beach County Mounted Posse is a nonprofit that operates the ring and the competitions at the Jim Brandon Center. And, you know, it, this issue was brought to me by one of our, one of our firefighters, one of our own, whose son is somebody I recognized a few years back in declaring it John Kemp Day because of this young man's courageous battle with a debilitating disease. And it's so exciting to see him overcome his disabilities and the afflictions he has from that disease by running in these barrel racing competitions at this Jim Brandon Center. And I don't, and I want to thank staff for trying to work on a solution. There's a lot of complaints I'm receiving from members of the public about this particular nonprofit not fulfilling the promises and the awards to the winners of these competitions, and that's probably not something that we want to really get too involved in. We don't want to be the arbitrators of, of those competitions. But what I do think we have some control on, the Palm Beach County Mounted, Mounted Posse, getting the permit to even run these competitions from Parks and Rec dates back to when Tony Mazzolati was the Commissioner, and this facility, they were granted basically sole, sole proprietorship to run these competitions because their location was rezoned. They were originally at Belvedere and 441, and that property then became a medical office building. And so Commissioner Mazzolati at the time made them a promise that they would be granted a permit to operate at the Jim Brandon Center. I would have to guess, and maybe Jennifer or Eric can confirm, that that is not something that has ever gone out for solicitation, for, for proposals. And so I would like to direct staff to look at putting that particular vendor, that particular agreement out to RFP, and let's get some proposals in there to see if there's somebody else that can run that ring and those competitions and see if there's interest. If it dates back to Tony Mazzolati, that's almost, that's at least 16 years old, if not older, and it's time to see if there are any other vendors that provide that service. And then my last, my last comment is a happy one. I just want to congratulate Mr. Bonlaren on his impending growing family and look forward to my goddaughter getting a sibling. Happy New Year.
Very good. Good to have some happy news. Commissioner Bernard, we have your memo, so we know you have something on your mind.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone. The past two years has been really challenging, and many of our residents in Palm Beach County are facing high housing costs in the county, and when our residents are renewing their rent, it's been a shocking increase for our residents. And so the Housing Steering Committee, they've been meeting for a little bit under a year to, to try to create a housing plan for Palm Beach County. And in order for them to create that plan, we need to have county staff to kind of like interject in that process, so in that way, they can finalize the plan. For me, the ideal situation would be for us to be able to build an additional 20,000 additional housing for our residents in the next 10 years. And so with county staff helping, I believe that they can come up with a plan for, to help our residents. So that's my direction. Next is the, on the third January of this month, we'll be celebrating MLK Day. Vice Mayor Craig Weiss, he's worked on, with the MLK Junior Coordinating Committee. They're having their 41st Annual Scholarship Breakfast, and so we do hope that that's a success, and we want to thank Edith Bush and the whole committee for their work on, for, for the breakfast. Next, recent losses in the county. During the holiday break, it was extremely heartbreaking for two families in Palm Beach County. I would like to extend my condolences to the family of 13-year-old Stanley Davis Jr. and 14-year-old Vinsley Maxime, which resides in District 6. And then also, we lost Estella Py from, our community also lost her. She was truly a dedicated servant to, to Palm Beach County, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bernard, Commissioner Bernard. Vice Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the mayor, I would like to request a certificate of congratulations in recognition of Reach Link being selected for the inaugural Forbes Next 1,000 list for 2021.
Seconded by Commissioner Kerner, all in favor, all opposed. That's been approved unanimously.
And also requesting that we receive and file the Board's and Commission's assignments for 2022.
And that's just been tweaked slightly since the last time. I think you've all seen it. I have a motion, I have seconded by Commissioner Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. It's been received and filed. Thank you, Vice Mayor. You have any of your own remarks?
You know, I just, I think as, you know, as we've entered into this next phase, if you will, or this surge of COVID-19, that people remember that, you know, we just need to be flexible and be able to pivot quickly as, as things change on the ground, that this, this virus, you know, although it is now almost two years old, is still something, it's a novel virus, and it's changing, and we're going to have to modify and learn how we, how we live with it. And just, you know, we just need to be able to, to change things as we see what's happening on the ground. And I appreciate everybody on this Board's effort to try and help, help our community pivot and make the changes and make the adjustments that we need to make to keep everybody as safe as possible. And I also want to thank Commissioner Bernard, your comments on Martin Luther King Coordinating Committee, and also to let the public know that this year, we do have a virtual option available. We were, you know, we were hopeful that it may not have been, it might have been different, but we, this year, we do have that virtual option available for folks that want to attend the breakfast from their own homes. So I invite you on, and there's a number of other events to celebrate the, the teachings, the, the words of Dr. Martin Luther King in Palm Beach County, and, you know, it's also remind people, we have the memorial to him in, in West Palm Beach, and that's something our community, not only West Palm Beach, but all of Palm Beach County can, I think, celebrate. He was a man who helped, helped this country move forward in, at a time when we were trying to deal with racial tensions in this country, civil rights and understanding and, but to do so in a nonviolent way that is supportive. So if you have an opportunity, you might happen, stop by the memorial. It's been redone by the city of West Palm Beach. They made a tremendous investment. It's, it's been totally redone, and it's just beautiful. So thank you for that, and those are my comments today.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll finish off by saying, I never knew that I'd have to learn the Greek alphabet, but obviously, between hurricanes that go beyond the alphabet and then now our, our famous little virus here, or, or whatever it is this week, we have to be nimble. Obviously, bureaucracy and being nimble doesn't always merge together, but I think that our county administrator and our county staff are doing a tremendous job in trying to be prepared for the next wave of this virus that keeps on coming back. We certainly have demonstrated a, an ability to meet it. As Todd mentioned, three or four weeks ago, we were looking at taking some of these test sites down because they were pretty quiet, and then all of a sudden, we were hit with this newest wave, and I'm sure there will be others behind it. But we are certainly equal to it. If everybody just, like Commissioner McKinley said, if you can, get the vaccination. If you can, get the booster and, you know, be cognizant of your surroundings. Obviously, we are all germ factories, and if we can, you know, keep our germs to ourselves, this, this virus is going to be more under control. So, and as far as Dr. King, you know, we are all going to be celebrating Dr. King's life next week. There are many different ceremonies. I'll be participating in some down in South County. I know my colleagues will be all over the county at those ceremonies, and it demonstrates the good in people, and I know that this is something that's important, that we all remember, that there's a tremendous good in our county. We are going to recess until 2:00 PM, when we will have matters by the public. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you then.